Tennessee is now in session. Honorable Chairman David Bell Frizzati, God bless these United States, your great state of Tennessee, and this honorable court. At this time, Gary Allen, Pastor Gary Allen, will lead us in prayer. Afterwards, please remain standing for the pledge of the American flag.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for the day, for the opportunity just to be in this room tonight. Thank you for the beautiful community that you place us in. So I pray for these men and women who are in this room who have chosen to serve our community. I ask that you give them great wisdom as they deliberate and decide. I ask that you give them discernment into the nuances of situations and circumstances so that they decide correctly, so that we can move our county along in a positive direction. I pray tonight that our deliberations, decisions be acceptable to you. Love you. I see things in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you have a cell phone, please turn it down. Madam Burden, y'all row?
Bell?
Present.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Present.
Cunningham, absent.
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Goss?
Here.
Hendrickson?
Here.
Hester? Absent. Hooks?
Here.
Kirby?
Here.
Lehman? Absent. Parks?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Twelve present, three absent.
That was warm. First thing up would be approval of max of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Do I have it?
No.
Second, Wilson.
You have anything?
I do not.
You have anything, Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing.
Anybody else have anything? Call the old man, I'll look.
Bell?
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby? Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
All right, next thing up, the accepted committee and report correspondence. Everybody have most?
Still no.
Barry? And Burden, you have anything, Mr. Barry?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On report number three, bottom of the page, it's talking about Tennessee Department of Transportation, widening the Highway seventy project. It says now that it's moved back to twenty-three to twenty-five. We know anything about that? That borderline, I guess.
Twenty-three to twenty-five feet?
No, a year from twenty-three to twenty-five.
Oh. Yeah, just a... My understanding, top of the T dot, looking at numerous projects, it's a matter of prioritization within the TPO. Not that that's been deprioritized, just that timelines have been extended over time.
So you know Oak Ridge has been backed up as well, Jim?
Duff? No, I don't think it's been backed up. I think it remains on track. In fact, I talked to Dean Plur today about that, and they've received a bulk of the items needed for sewer relief, utility relocation. Like, we're ahead of schedule on that, as a matter of fact, on that relocation.
Yes. Report number four, page five. Down at the bottom on the Old City Bonding Office, talking about the roof and everything. Did we receive rent money from the State Probation Office on that?
Not probation.
That's... I mean, it says it's being used for the State Audit Probation Office. We don't see any rent or anything from it? So we're providing the maintenance on it and everything for them then?
Say it again.
That's that white building here.
It says the State Audit Probation Office right back here, the one that City Bonding used to operate out of.
I can find out that.
Yep. I mean, it looks like we're not receiving rent, they would at least pay the maintenance of that, because we replaced the roof. Also, on number eleven, number two is the building at Midtown that I think we're leasing for the... And the sheriff, I think, has a lot of stuff in there. And I know back a couple of years ago, the roof leaked, and we had to spend a lot of money on that, and I think we were going to change the lease on that. I'm just curious if we have what we've done there. Because that comes up, I think, in June, July, so that might...
So we talked about that a little bit in the Property Committee, but now when we... Were we looking at the records?
No, this is the one. I think they have a boat in there and some vehicles.
Yeah.
No, that building came up in discussion about records. It may not have been in committee, but it was about that.
Yes, I think it's full.
Yeah, and I think that's why we didn't pursue it.
But I'm just curious. We probably need to make sure if we're gonna... If a new lease comes up, we need to look and make sure of that, because I think we spent considerable money fixing it. We're leasing, so just... We can just get that one checked on. And number eight, on number eight, I would just like to amend the minutes, just to get in there. I was at the meeting that spoke with Tony and the committee about Glen Alice Facility. It's really difficult to maneuver. It's laid out different than the others. You can only come in from one side, and just like the day that was a car parked right inside the gate, so you had to go around the car, back up, to get your refuge emptied out, so... But I just wanted to get... Make sure we got it in the minutes for that. Number nine, I was thinking, we wanted to check on the... First of all, at the top, we talked about looking at the Fire Board in OES meetings being at the same time, but I talked to a couple of folks, and they say the fire meetings last considerably, because I think they're just meeting quarterly as well, and if we did that, the meetings may really, really be lengthy, so that might be just something that the committee or committees wants to look at if that comes up, looking at both of those. We also found out that our mini pumper was still having problems, and I guess, Mr. Leffey, I'm just curious as to what recourse we have, because they gave us a new warranty when we took the pumper the last time, right?
You have an extended warranty.
Yes, so I guess, Mr. Trudy, can we get with him and look at that and see what our options are on that, because we're still having difficulty with it.
Yes, sir.
So that might be something we want to look at. That's one of the things we probably need to look at. And then I guess the... I noticed in one report, we were using eighty-four thousand dollars for paving at the Harriman Facility, and I'm just curious how much did we actually spend on the Harriman Facility, because I don't think the paving was in there. We put... He did an air and all that stuff. I'm not... I don't know how much we've actually put into the Harriman Facility.
For the total cost of... Little over three hundred thousand. Are you talking for purchasing? You're asking how much of the art money?
Yeah.
Little over three hundred.
Over three hundred?
Yes.
Okay. And we're still... I think we're still looking at a bid for the building at Gallow Hard Road.
Do you think we're...
We are. So we had seven hundred total, so we should be okay on that.
Yeah, we're anticipating the elements.
Maybe we'll let them?
Maybe.
That'd be great. And number fifteen was a letter from Mark Watson, Mayor of Oak Ridge, talking about the Oak Ridge Airport. And I know we approved the resolution some time ago in support of the airport as they were starting. Now, I think the game has changed in that there are some industrial prospects wanting to use the rail line that Energy Solutions bought from Croat. So now Croat is supporting the Oak Ridge facility for the airport, and I just think we need to be really careful what we... Have we answered that? I mean, I don't know, Mr. Executive, if you were going to answer it or please?
I would only answer it if you... The commission directed me to answer it. I had no plans to be... To provide a formal response.
Okay, because there's... And the Croat Board used to involve about forty-five people, which we had several in Roan County, and now we think it's nine members, or it's way reduced, but we don't even know who those members are now, so I think we probably need to find out who the Croat members are, what's going on with the industries, because those industries are in Roan County, and if they back out, you know, this sounds like the Oak Ridge Airport could be in trouble. Just seems like... And then number nineteen was a letter from Joe Heckman from Energy Solutions, and so Energy Solutions runs the railroad up there, and so they don't want to lose customers as well, so we may want to come back with a resolution next month on that, give you something for guidance. Okay, so that's fifteen and nineteen. Sixteen was a memo from the Connecticut Executive to us, and I would just like to publicly commend him for receiving a letter in the morning and reacting by five o'clock that evening on the third floor of the courthouse, and I think we were able, as the Property Committee, to take his direction and move eighty-seven thousand pounds off the third floor.
Ninety-three now.
Ninety-three, so I just want to say thanks. Thanks for that. And number thirty-two, last one, was from Tennessee Controllers Office on the anticipation notes, the trans twenty-three from that inter-fund loan from General Purpose School Fund, and that budget... That's all coming out of schools, school fund, right?
Yes.
We just borrowed the money, helped them get started.
Yes, sir. It's cash flow short, so we just... Just short term, it has to be paid back before June thirtieth.
And that comes out?
It all comes out from the general purpose in one forty-two.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask your report?
No, sir.
Mr. Burden, do you have anything?
He's pretty well cooked.
Bell? Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you, Madam Burden. Well, next up on the agenda is the notes. Dan?
Most! There.
You speak, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Madam Burden, do you read more?
We have four: Russell Byrd, Bradley Parrish, Angelita Reyna, and Crystal Sims.
You have anything?
Thank you for the service, sir.
You have anything?
I don't know what he said.
Madam Burden, y'all row?
Bell?
Aye.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Next up on the agenda is the hearing of delegations. Anybody from the House would like to speak, talk a vision about how's your time? You have three minutes for first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Justin Snow, the interim president of Roanoke Lights. I'm getting used to saying that, so I've been in this role for about five weeks now, so I appreciate y'all letting me come by tonight and give you a brief update. The one thing that's happened in the past five weeks is I get myself a little bit more into the chamber and to workforce and education development and tourism and marketing, and I can tell you, one of the main priorities that I have from now to the end of the year, I didn't even know about this grant when I took on this role, but the day I ever took on this role, I found out that there was a marketing grant with this Tennessee Department of Tourism through the American Rescue Plan, and there's thousands of grant funding dollars that are hundred percent reversible, irreversible over the next five years. So these are irreversible dollars that's outside of our normal budget to focus on new projects to drive tourism. So we've been planning the scope of work based on the wish list of projects that we see most impactful, so this is beneficial to every city and county, the county itself. From the three dollars we can market to attract people to come here to spend money, come to the American Center Hotel, so it's really a win-win situation for everybody, and this is something we can take advantage of over the next five years. As far as a few updates within Roanoke Regional Business and Technology Park, there's gonna be a lot of activity in the park the next several months. First of all, there was a pre-construction meeting that was held back in November for the streetlight project. If you remember, a few months ago, the county approved for seventeen streetlights to be put up in the park, so work can begin on that project in March, once the supplies and the materials are available. Second, the construction of the sewer line and electricity extensions to the Jones Road site should start within the next few weeks. All this, of course, coincides with the ongoing construction of the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand square foot spec building, which is on schedule to be delivered in June of two thousand twenty-three. So we're still getting a lot of good looks on the site and that building. Matter of fact, today, I submitted for a project last week. The state was able to submit two sites from the state of Tennessee, and one of the sites they submitted was Roan County. So it's good they come back. They want more information, so we're on the short list, and that's where we want to be on. We want them on short list. We want them to come visit, and we want to get on to an even shorter list and get to a final list, okay? Last thing I want to mention in the park is that a request for proposal for engineering services administered a couple of weeks ago for the Sam Rayburn Extension Project. So if you remember, earlier this year, the county appropriated three-quarters of a million dollars out of art funding to go to extend the road and utilities at the end of the cul-de-sac in Roanoke Regional. I've got a few handouts, so I'm gonna pass them out. I'll be brief. Does everybody know Alan Lutz? Alan worked with us. He's a great with education, workforce development. He's actually planning on retirement next year, so he's gonna be hard to fill his shoes, but a couple of things I want to mention, Alan's really good with career awareness, so a couple of things he likes to do is, one is Career Day, so the Roanoke County Schools Combined High School and Middle School Career Day is March thirtieth. That will be held at Harriman High School. And then on October the eighteenth, there was fifty-eight CTE students from Harriman and Midway High Schools that visited four manufacturing companies in Roanoke County Industrial Park, so there's a news release that I gave you tonight, and the news release described similar visits that were made by Rockwood High School students on September thirteenth, so I think that's one of the best things we can do as far as education development is career awareness, and Alan Lutz does a great job of that. Last thing I'll mention is that if I don't see all of you before Christmas, I'm gonna wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, but I hope to see you. If you seen the packet I gave you, there's an invitation to the Roanoke Lights Christmas Open House, which is Thursday, this Thursday, from eleven to two. All of you are invited, so come by for fellowship, for networking, for good food, and I hope all of y'all to make it, so I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Mr. Chairman? We got Mr. Goss.
One thing I can say about this Career Day, Tim has been very proactive about us going out and doing people events like that. We have been part of this, though we have, officer of emergency, both the Fire Division and the UMS Division, and this is a great event. When we go out to these events, we do really push, trying to do recruitment of volunteer firefighters. Through the years, it has taken in some, not as much as we want, but it is a great event. If you ever get a chance to kind of materialize, you know, all the agencies there, it's fantastic, and Alan's always been super.
Alan's phenomenal.
Incredible.
It'll be hard to fill his shoes without you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barry?
Yes, on the Sur at Jones. Have we ever finalized the Lenore City Sur agreement?
I met with general manager and mayor two and a half months ago, and encouraged that to continue. I haven't heard anything since.
Since we haven't done anything, would it be wise to wait and see what's going to occupy this two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand square foot? Good for our capacity that we...
I don't think... No, I don't think it's wise to wait in any... Because it's been how long now?
Well, but our capacity, at one time, we had seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons a day that we reduced that now, right?
Well, it's a roll, but if you remember, as we added capacity, they had to add capacity. It was a rolling figure that had to be maintained, so no, I don't believe push.
I'd love it. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
So what's the holdup? I mean, this has been going on for years.
You have to stay signed what we need to be signed.
That's a good question.
I mean, Mr. Leffey, is there any recourse we can take against them?
I need to look at it, because it's been going on for so long, and it's been probably a year or so since I've been involved in it.
The last response I have is they were waiting on their attorney.
That's what they've been saying for years. We...
Years.
We had a meeting, we had a meeting four or five years ago with myself, the Industrial Board Attorney, the attorney for the utility, and we had talked about what we needed to do to present a final document, and it never got drawn up, and I think the utilities attorney was charged with drawing it up, and then there was another issue of the roads that had something to do with Waspar Utility District, and I can't remember exactly what that was. That was my last involvement in it, and that has been probably three or four years ago.
I think that was on extension or something.
But that's been resolved. We talked with Waspar's relationship. They were literally waiting on, and there's nothing on our side.
We've had a meeting since what Mr. Lutz referenced about three years ago. We had all parties in the same building, and we walked away from that meeting, from that meeting, agreeing on everything that we're going to pay everything back, and our lawyers are going to draw everything out, and that's where we're still at.
And we've been playing piddly waiting for five, six years now, and it's time to put up or shut up. I think something needs to be done, or we need to just... I don't really know what we need to do, but, you know, that's for our attorney and whoever else, but, you know, it's time it gets moved on. There's no sense in pushing off claim that...
One common factor is we're in between attorneys at IDB, right?
That's no excuse.
I'm saying as far as being able to send a court's bonds right now.
I'm just saying that they need to have somebody that can step up, fill the shoes until finally it's done. I mean, case in point, we got David Bell turned out because the sheriff couldn't be here. We need to be able to pull somebody else in to do something. This has been going on for six years, wasting taxpayer's money, and I'm open, you know. I don't know what good it's going to do for me to be open, but y'all should be open too, and, you know, it takes something to end right now, you know, and I don't know what it takes, but that's why we have an attorney, you know, to help guide us, and the board needs to step up, the industrial board does, and get somebody in there to do the letter, and I ain't saying it's got to be a permanent attorney, but let them know. I have no problem, you know, doing tax abat for these companies coming in here. Let's let get them to get this signed for us, get it done. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many really going to get in the way? Go ahead, Mr. [inaudible].
Good station.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. What leverage do we have on the bill? What is... Do we have any cards to play?
Why don't you let me look into it, because as I say, I was brought into it three years ago and have not been probably brought back into it since then, so why don't you let me look into it and come back next month and make a report? I'm good with that.
Mr. [inaudible].
Mr. Barry, do we have a new attorney for the Industrial Board yet?
That's what I was saying. I was trying to ask Justice.
We hired him.
Can you share that with us?
We hired, we told him last month to move forward with John Owens.
John Owens?
Yeah, he's actually also the city attorney with Sheriff Parrish.
Okay, and Mr. Lutz, you remember, we met last time at their old facility. They've been in the new facility now how long?
I went to one meeting at the new facility, so we did meet initially at the old facility. The meeting that I was at was at the new facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in delegation?
Still got the board on. You get it, okay. Let's vote.
Here in delegation.
What else we got to do? I'm ready.
Anybody else want to speak? All right. See nothing? Oh, okay. I was hoping we could get up there.
(singing) It's wonderful time of the year. I go from Patriot's Day to Thanksgiving, and I've been thinking about... I don't have much of a voice, but I can talk, and I've got five senses. I've been thinking a lot about my senses and ability to walk and all, and it's good to take a little time out during the season to be grateful for what we have. Thanksgiving, and Girl Arbor Day, and Christmas New Year's to start, to try to see if I can go out. I got a real nice Christmas card from Hillsdale College. They were established in eighteen forty-four in Hillsdale, Michigan, and they've got free online courses in the Constitution, learning the Constitution and different things about government. I think they have kindergarten to twelve grade also, and here's a little, a couple lines that General President George Washington wrote in a letter to Hebrew congregation seventeen ninety in Newport, and I don't think that's Newport, Tennessee. It might have been Newport, Connecticut, or Newport, Virginia, but he said, "May the Father, our founding fathers, love the Lord, may the Father of all mercies scatter light and not darkness upon our paths and make us all in our several locations useful here, and in his own dear time and way everlastingly happy." God bless y'all. I wish you a happy Merry Christmas, and a very healthy and prosperous New Year. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in delegation? I'll speak for the commission. Saying that, we'll move on to the county attorney's report.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary Prudential.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna do the...
Yes.
Resolution?
So we have, we're gonna move the resolution for... So, we have, uh, we're going to move the resolution for, uh, Mr. Jock Raymond.
You'll go ahead and do your, Mr. Mayor.
Our report.
Your report and.
He's trying to say he's going to be late.
All right.
No, it's not too bad.
It ain't too bad. Let's just go ahead and do yours, get it out of the way, then we'll go for the.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, on, in, on your desk, you had a letter from Coram Engineering, an updated letter, dated December 2nd. We received the first letter that's in your correspondence in the packet on November 8th. You call emergency meeting of the property committee, jump into action. Thanks to a number of our staff, especially Kenny Clinton, who's here with us and his team, we were able to move 93,000 pounds of records off the third floor. As this letter states, as long as the remaining cabinets that are in the attic and the voting machines are, are distributed appropriately, according to this letter, with a three-foot buffer around them, and we're adhering to 40 pounds per square foot, that this building can hold that load. We have done that upstairs. There's still a little bit of movement on, on some of the voting machines in the hallway. Outside of that, we've done exactly what this letter states and should be in compliance, making this a safer building. So, I hope that you all feel safer being here. I think our staff does. But I just wanted to commend our staff. So many of our team jumped in to make this happen, make this a safer situation all the way around. Now, that being said, this is only the short-term solution. So, immediately, we jumped into action to try to identify long-term central record-keeping storage facilities nearby. So, the property committee, we, we will reach out to property committee to reconvene when we have a good handle on what those options are and try to pick a direction on what we want to do with long-term record storage. That's where we are on that right now. Glad to answer any que, any questions if you have any. Second thing, on your desk, you had a permit map. We would like to include this in your packet, but we don't receive until the end of the month. We can, probably what we'll end up doing is waiting a month and then putting it in the previous month's packet. But, uh, what, we really want to show you this, this is a request of Commissioner Hester, just to see visually where the building permits are. We still remain ahead of where we've been in the past last year, so our permit numbers continue to be high. Mr. Koford told us to date. He projects that by the end of the year, we will have set a record number of permits again once you, this year. So, we'll continue to make that information visually available to you. On Wednesday, I will travel with Chief Phillips to Nashville, to T C I, to, to go over the county's, uh, proposed corrective action plan. That's not the exact terminology I had in the letter in here. The, uh, T C I Plan of Action, that's what I was looking for. Uh, on this year's Plan of Action, we've been under a Plan of Action for nine years now. Uh, we're, we reconvened the J O Alternatives Committee, as you all know, some of you serve on it. But I'm going with Chief Phillips to talk about what this Plan of Action is and to let them know that we reconvened and that we're beginning that process to look at all of our alternatives moving forward, also as a part of our long-range planning. Just letting you know that that was happening. Speaking of long-term planning, Long-Term Planning, Long-Range Planning Committee met last week and officially committed to a, a community-wide comprehensive planning process. As a result of that, letters were sent out on Friday and received today by all of the elected officials in the county, the utilities in the county, uh, the schools, and all the cities. All of the county departments were already working on these. In fact, their rough draft, the first draft is due to be on January 3rd. So, that started the process and also up in a look at bringing the recommendation back to the Long-Range Planning Committee on a consultant that can help drive this process and see it through to completion. But I think this is a huge step forward for our county to choose a vision in multiple different areas and then help bring everybody on board throughout the county to pull in that direction. And the last thing I want to say, I do this with my own staff, is every staff meeting, we, the first way we start meeting is we celebrate. So, the things that we celebrate, we point out to one another. And there's one major thing I wanted to celebrate here, and, and as Errol Smith was able to join us after a long ride today from St. Jude Children's Hospital. And on Friday, uh, there was a party at St. Jude Children's Hospital to celebrate the last chemo treatment for. Jack, can his report removed? He came home today, and I thought that was something worth notable, worth, worth noting and celebrating.
Thank you. Thank you all.
That's it, Mr. Chairman?
That's awesome. We appreciate it. Next up, special orders. We're going to jump down, um, to Resolution 112213. That's a, a resolution that honors Mr. Jock Raymond as a Rome County Treasurer for the, uh, 2022 County Founder's Day. We're going to let the chairman drive. Read to you, eleven. While we're waiting on that, is Francis Law on here?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to draw that and just ask him to send, uh, send this law from that resolution.
Yeah, the official one. Hey, don't be sucking up from the distance. Resolution to honor Mr. Jock Raymond's Rome County Treasurer in commemoration of 2020, 2022 Rome County Founder's Day, whereas Rome County, Tennessee was officially founded on November 6th, 1801, and whereas the Rome County Government deserves Founder's Day each year to commemorate the county's date of origin, and whereas Jock Raymond has served Rome County in many capacities and set an example of service and compassion to fellow Rome Countyans throughout his lifetime, and whereas Rome County Commission desires to honor those who have helped shape Rome County through their dedication and service to the Rome County communities each year on Founder's Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Rome County Commission officially honors Jock Raymond as Rome County Treasurer for 2022 Rome County Founder's Day. And this motion, uh, uh, resolution that Rome County Commission finly, officially honors Jock Raymond as Rome County Treasurer for 2022 Rome's Day, and then we'll be voting on it, and thereupon the county chairman announces the commission that said, "Resolution had received a cumulative majority of order spread of the record." Now, behind every man is a great woman, and she needs to be up there with us, so, uh, Ms. Raymond, I appreciate you coming up here.
For the record, I won't put, I won't put next, and, and Mr. Burke, and on the motion second.
Appreciate it.
They've already said everything, you don't say much, you won't say something. There we go. Matt, is it?
Sure. Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Layman? I'm sorry. Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Now, one thing about Jock Raymond, and honestly, he's been a businessman, but he's also a veteran of the United States Army, but, yes, and served in Vietnam and, and all that, so, and so not only having some of the best barbecue, not the best barbecue around, that smokehouse, that's a little plug there. We greatly appreciate it. So, he, uh, we're here honoring tonight, and here's your, your plaque, and this is also the, uh, uh, Rome Treasurer, the 16th Class Rome Treasurer from Rome County, Tennessee. And this is, I'm not signed to this, and if anybody wants to get any pictures. Thank you very much. It's quite a honor. I appreciate. All right, but thank you, thank you, appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
All right, next up, the special order, the confirmation appointment of Dr. Carol Wood, G S D, to the County Board of Public Utilities, appointed by, uh, Mr. Dick Wade Treschler. Do I have a motion?
No.
Mr. Dove? And second by Mr. Parks, the correct, or Mr. Brown.
He's looking mad.
What do you got on that, Mr. Dove?
Uh, she served, currently serves on the Rome County Fire and Homeland Review Board because outstanding job. She's actually, uh, elected the Chair of that committee at the, at our meeting.
Thank you. Do you have, do you have, Mr. Brown?
No.
Madam Clark, you call Rome?
Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
That's it. Number two on special orders, the confirmation of appointment of Bobby Anderson to a four-year term on the 911 Board. Term will expire on December 14th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Goss and Mr. Brown. Do you have anything, Mr. Jock?
The term on here doesn't need to be changed?
That term, Eric.
It expires 24.
I realize that, that needs to be 2026, is that correct?
It says 24 on the special order.
It's two-year term? Two-year term. I thought it said, so it says four-year term.
I think, so he thinks what's happened, which is he's, he's taking Jason Jolly's place on that board, and I think he's fulfilling Jason's, Jason's target.
I can edit the language in the ministry.
Anything else, Mr. Jock?
Bobby's well-deserved enough. Um, he'd be having emergency services, he'd be, he'd be great access to the 911.
Thank you. Go back to you, Mr. Wilson.
No.
Madam Clark, call Rome?
Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
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 Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
That's it. Next resolution, 122202, Resolution Honor and Services of Sherman, Sherman P. Nonna, as clerk-in-chief.
Motion.
Second. And back to you, Mr. Wilson.
No, he, he has served a long time, done a great job, and deserves to be recognized.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Madam Clark, call Rome?
Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Resolution, that is, Resolution 122202, Resolution Honor and Services of Sherman, Sherman P. Nonna, as clerk-in-chief.
Motion.
Second. And up center, Goss. And back to you, Mr. Anderson.
She's done a good job, been there many years, appreciate her, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Said, uh, she ended the morning, won't be missed, uh, she's been a valuable, well, she's been a big asset.
First one of the last one, please. I'll say that. Anybody else? Madam Clark?
Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
That's it. Next resolution, 122203, Resolution to amend the solid waste sanitation and recycling charges as presented in the appropriation resolution, 062205B, and the table of section 24. Motion, Wilson. Will? Anderson?
Yes.
Anything, Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing further at this time.
Nothing further, Anderson. Nothing further at this time.
Anyone else? Mr. Barrett?
Yes. Uh, I'd like to offer amendment. I think the committee came up to the budget committee that right now, we're charging $5 each, and I think the actual cost to us is $25 at Loudoun. Uh, so, uh, I think the committee was going to go from $5 to $15, which still, which still leaves us at a loss. I'd, I'd like to amend, uh, the resolution that we go from, go ahead, go from $5 to the $25 and get it, and get it done where taxpayers aren't, aren't, aren't losing anybody. And it's the same, almost everywhere, that's, that's, that's their charge, anyone using landfill, so, uh, our taxpayers are losing money right now, and all this would be is if you, if you have a mattress or a box spring, you would pay. If you don't, there's, there's, there's no peace.
Yeah, have a second.
I'll say it.
Say, Dan. We don't want anybody like that. Mr. Dan, do I speak?
No, as Ron said, we, we are losing money. Loudoun County does charge $25 for each mattress and each box spring. So, the solid waste, we were not charging for box springs, but now we, we had to because Loudoun County, even if we break them down, you know, they're just lumber, but if we break Uh, and the purpose was that, if you go read on to the amendments and stuff, you know, we just want to look later about, you know, seeing how this went. Uh, the reason I done that, I understand we're losing money. But, you know, again, it's like other issues that I was thinking, you know, how, how long has this been going on, you know? Why wasn't it addressed sooner than how, you know, it got this far? So, I was looking at, you know, instead of trying to do a sticker shot, you know, they're going to come up front and, you know, dispose of it. And they're going to get $25 right off the top. That was the reason to do the 15, Mr. Barry. Then, you know, again, looking at it a few months down the road, uh, you know, and we all agree, you know, to do it, and then look and see what happens, and then go and go for the full price.
Mr. Duff?
I had a question about electronics. It's $5 per item. Is that the actual cost that will be charged for those items as well, even out of solid waste?
If, if you bring that down, yes, you're charged.
So, we're not losing money on it. That's, that's what we're having to pay.
I think, which, exactly, County Executive wants to jump in here and clarify.
Yeah, a couple of points of clarification. These costs that we are recommending, but has gone through the committee, are as a reflection of what it costs us. Okay. The correct cost. Also, I would say too, that this, just past this amendment, or the amended resolution passed Budget Committee this evening as well. So, it was discussed, uh, I think this was discussed. Commissioner Goss's concerns was, was addressed, but it passed Budget Committee, too.
Anyone else like to speak on the amendment?
Yeah, oh, I would.
I'm gonna have to go with Mr. Bragg.
No, that's not the first.
I know it's going to be a sticker shot, but like I said, it's been pointed out, we can't just hemorrhage the money, right? And I, and they say, well, we're going to find it on the road. People that's going to dump on the road, we're going to dump on the road irregardless. But is there a way or something, I've heard of shredder, different ideals maybe, that we could hopefully revisit this and come back down?
It shouldn't work.
It don't work, okay. So, there is kind of a way?
Ms. Henderson?
Uh, I think, uh, you know, the they need some bit of deterrent to keep them from throwing it on the road. I mean, it can't be a $2 litter find if somebody catches them actually doing it. You know, it needs to be something that's going to, you know, make them hurt. We just can't just raise the price and then county's going to pay for it regardless. Whether they're picking up off the side of the road or, or paying the difference in landfill. But, you know, if we want to do this, you know, they, we need to be with, you know, the courses or something and try to do something to make it, if they're spotted that, and, you know, police catch them doing it. It needs to be more than a $2, $3 litter find. You know, it needs to be substantial. You know, I mean, uh, otherwise, it's just going to be open market.
I agree enforcement is, is the solution here, yeah.
Is that all you have?
It is. I mean, it's, that's it. I will answer.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
No.
Yeah, uh, just one other thing, and I actually thought about this in the Budget Committee, but didn't bring it up. Is there a way that we can, obviously there is, but get this information out to the public prior to them pulling up the scales and, and having a freakout moment, you know, making sure that we get that with an explanation. However, we need to do that to get it out to the public. Putting on the website, putting it out, maybe even in the newspaper, whatever we need to do. But they are going to pull us there thinking, you know, $10. And I do agree with what Mr. Barry said. There's no reason for us to eat that cost. And I would like that to get out to the public as, as well as possible.
Mr. Wilson? I know that people that subscribe to newspaper are going to, that ain't going to help a whole lot.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Burke?
Mr. Chairman?
I would, go ahead.
Mr. Barrett?
I would, uh, make, make my amendment part of that, too, uh, to read it out. You would like to, you would like to throw a 60-day deal out there, but if we do that, we're going to be bombarded with mattresses and box springs. I, I would, I would ask that, that they post a sign at, at the, at the solid waste facility and, and make this effective January 1st.
We got that, Madam Clerk, good.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Kim?
I'm not trying to make this a small thing. Rome County has 53, a little over 53,000. So, you have a potential of 53,000 mattresses to show up at a landfill or down a contingency. But I don't think, if you're like me, I don't think we're replacing mattresses. Everybody in Rome County is replacing a mattress every year. I, I, I think we'll be okay. Honestly, I do. I think we'll be okay by raising this rate. Hopefully, everybody will recognize that it is the taxpayers' money. So, hopefully, we can all keep in on that. But I don't think I have this 53,000 mattresses showing up at a landfill.
Anyone else on there, man?
One question, man. You know, uh, and I don't know what we've got to do to get this done, but, you know, we should, uh, there should be a fee like there are with tires. You know, we charge people for the tires. You know, there needs to be some fee attached at the companies that sell these mattresses to cover that cost. So, to pay for it upfront and give them, you know, this, give them back from the state to us or what have you, like to do with tires. It's just something I'm throwing out. That's the only way to really get by. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else on the amendment? See, I'm, uh, call Rome on amending, uh, the resolution.
Bell?
Hi. Or no, I'm sorry, no.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
No.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Nine yess and two nos?
Number passes. Now, on to the resolution as amended. Wilson had the four words, Henderson spoke on it. Anybody else want to speak on it as amended? See, $9 Rome.
Bell?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
No.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Nine yess, two nos?
Resolution passes. Next resolution, 12204, resolution so as in the County Executive to apply community development block grant, CP addressing food insecurity grant for FY '23 to amend the budget if approved. Wilson, motion. Have a second.
Second.
Wilson, you have, Mr. Wilson, you have?
Uh, this has been through the Budget Committee with the man's decision. Obviously, this is an overriding.
Ten yess.
Should. Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yess?
Resolution passes. Next resolution, Resolution 12205, resolution so as in the County Executive to apply for private primary intervention fund grant for Rome County Sheriff's Office and amend the budget if approved. Wilson, motion.
Second, Goss.
Wilson, you have anything? Mr. Wilson?
This has been through the Budget Committee. I believe this has zero much dollars on to this. And if we were to receive this, it'd be great.
Mr. Goss?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Twelve yess?
Resolution passes. Uh, next resolution, 12206, resolution managing the general purpose fund, school fund, 141 collecting changes, 950, uh, 9500, 9538,000 expenditure estimates for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Wilson, motion.
Second, Barry.
Wilson, Barry. Mr. Wilson?
Uh, this has been through the Budget Committee. This was already passed as far as the school budget, but they have to break this down into the specific line to be able to distribute that fund, which is in for Christmas bonuses. And one other thing, if the director wants to speak on this, he, I will yield the board to him, but that's basically what it is. What else needs to be explained?
We had a lot of ready. Anybody else see that he did a job, got it far approved, and then so did you. And all this is, is he puts the money, sub on, non-recurring expenditure for full-time employees. But not everybody can do the same thing. You got bus drivers have to be paid out of one fund, cafeteria out of one funds. So, the next three resolutions clear that up. I was jumping ahead of four and after school, you see one full-time employee in that federal program. That's $10,000 for Christmas bonus. And then the next one, transportation fund, that's the transportation supervisor, uh, bus drivers and, uh, maintenance, or the maintenance mechanics in that office. That's what that fund is.
Mr. Barrett?
Only, only that it's non-recurring. This is.
Correct. It's a one-time rest.
One deals. This bonus, like, we give.
Anybody else?
Wait.
Mr. Goss?
Uh, Director, hi.
Mr. Goss, I'd ask you that you relate the question to this resolution and not the two others you talked about.
Okay, yes, well, this is, this is a principle here. I just got a quick question on it. Uh, Mr. Nicky, you said when I said that the employee loan, but when you go and you look through here, and like the bonus payments, with it, I just, I just making sure that I understood this right. Making, you know, making sure that it wasn't supposed to go under the bonus payment, or did you just go under the other?
No, that's all right. That goes, it goes to our individual payroll lines. Of course, we have to pay the benefits, because they're a share of that. So, it's not just straight up $1,000 in the payroll line. You have to pay the Medicare, so on and so forth, that. So, each, each $1,000, it does turn into, I think, $1,167 by the time we pay our, the employee pays their fortune out of their thousand, and then our local contribution fortune makes it a little more than $1,000 for the employee.
Anybody else? Duff?
I would, I would declare, um, next, uh, resolution that I, I believe the schools.
Second. Anybody else? Madam Clerk? Call Rome.
Bell?
Hi.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Parks?